I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of the City of Temple City, April 18th, 2023, to order. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, oh, yes. Yeah, go ahead. Oh, do I'm sorry. Thank you for the reminder. I do need to close out the, um, council had a closed session earlier, and I would like to ask Mr. City Attorney to report out on that before we open our regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council was briefed on three items: one item of potential initiation of litigation, one item of significant exposure to litigation, and one item of conference with labor negotiator. The council did receive briefings on all three; no reportable action was taken, and the closed session adjourned at 7:05 PM with the four members here present tonight, present for the entirety of the meeting. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, and we'll go back to opening our regular meeting. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sternquist is absent. Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Sternquist.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. There's no objections that motion carries; Councilmember Sternquist is excused. Next, we have the invocation. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Mr. Jerry Jambezian, owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies located at 9136 Lestunas Drive, to provide the invocation. If we all may please rise and remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's bow in prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to come to you in prayer for tonight's city council meeting. We pray for our mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members, including all city staff, that you would give them the necessary discernment and wisdom to make decisions that would make Temple City a great place to safely live, work, and raise a family. We have many things to thank you for, but at the same time, we realize that we live in a broken world, a world where lawlessness has become the norm, and people have lot lost their moral and civil compass. Father, it is our desire that people return to civility and caring for one another. We continue to pray for the war in the Ukraine to end and that tensions in Asia would and around the world would normalize. Our Lord, we would remember those around the world serving in our armed forces who protect the freedoms we enjoy; help them to know we appreciate their service. We pray for all the elected officials and authority over us, including county, state, and federal. I pray that they would legislate with common sense to bring consequences to those that would do us harm. We especially pray for those of, uh, those close to us that protect and serve us 24 hours a day, our firefighters at Station 47, and all the sworn and civilian staff at Temple Station 5. They put on their uniform every day, not knowing what danger will confront them. Lord, watch over them and build a hedge of protection around them. We ask this all in your precious name and for your glory. Amen.
Amen.
And I'll place the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Today, we have a few ceremonial matters, very special ones. First, we have the Temple City Chamber of Commerce, and we would like to introduce the new CEO and president, Mr. John Bari, and he is here tonight. Welcome, John.
Thank you. I come before you this evening as a new CEO here at the Temple City Chamber of Commerce. Temple City is such a unique community I've gotten to know over the last three or three to six weeks that I've been here. I'm really looking forward to working with the council, with the city staff, and with our board, and all the businesses in our community to strengthen our community. I come from a background that believes that working together, we can really accomplish a lot to move forward with intention, and having met most of you already, I just come before you this evening to thank you for your support, to acknowledge that there's a lot we can do together, and I look forward every day continuing to make deeper inroads into this community and supporting the needs of the smallest business to the largest business, which is to locate here so that we can create a vibrant economy that allows Temple City to shine as the city that has done so well for so long, to continue on that path into the future. And so, with every person that I meet thus far and in the future, I'm just, I'm excited to know that there's such passion and commitment to this community, and I hope I can do justice by this position by supporting that passion and commitment my own way. I also like to just introduce Lizette, who's here. Lizette is one of our staff members who will be here in the office and working with our community day in and day out alongside me and others from our staff, and I also want to thank our board members for being here. We have a number of them here who have trusted me to shepherd this next chapter for the Chamber of Commerce in Temple City. So, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, John. Now, does council have any questions for John while he's here?
What was your assistant's name again?
Lizette Vasquez.
Lizette, okay.
Lizette, stand up, Lizette.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Probably, probably see her as much as we'll see you.
Likely, likely.
Welcome, both of you. You know, I just want to mention, you know, John, I think we first met, was it at the Camellia Festival, or were you at the Camellia?
State of the City.
At the State of the City. Yeah, and I was, I was impressed by his excitement and his enthusiasm, and likewise, I think we all look forward to working with you, and I know you have a great board, and I foresee a lot of great things, so welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, John, thank you so much for being here tonight, and again, welcome, Lizette. Thank you for being here, too, as well as we do have a couple of board members, Board President Melissa Demiracy, Board Member Sircon Aronay, and Board Member Ed Chen. We've gone through some interesting times, but we've made it this far, and I myself, continuing to serve as the council liaison to the chamber, am very excited for this new chapter. So, thank you for being here, and we look forward to many of the exciting things coming our way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have another very special item. As many of you know, Mark Reyes has been the captain of, well, he was the captain of Temple Station for a number of years, and he basically serves as the chief of police for, for our city, and we want to recognize him tonight because he has been promoted to the position of commander. So, we are so very proud of him to have been promoted, and we're very proud of his achievement. Although I think I speak on behalf of council, we are sad to lose someone of such a great caliber, and we appreciate his leadership throughout the years. So, it is a bit bittersweet for us to see that, but we are always happy to see that the sheriff is promoting the right people within the leadership ranks. So, tonight, I would like for council to present with me a certificate of recognition to Mark Reyes, who was our captain from 2021 to 2023, and appreciation of your outstanding commitment to serving our community throughout the years. The tireless effort and devotion you have provided does not go unnoticed. City of Temple City greatly appreciates your time and dedication. Congratulations on your promotion to commander. And Commander, if you would like to say a few words?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Mann, Mayor Protem, Mr. Chavez, and members of the city council, and City Manager, Mr. Cook. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity for me to, to lead Temple Station. I was part of an interview process on a seven-member panel in order to get this job, so it didn't come easy. I was told the selection was unanimous, and so I'm very honored for that. I would have never imagined that as a young kid going to school in the City of Rosemead that one day I'd be the captain of this station. So, you've, you've helped me accomplish a lifelong dream that I'll take with me forever. But I must say that the credit really belongs to all of you who were supportive and all of the hard-working men and women at Temple Station, who, as was said earlier, dedicate their lives to public safety and put themselves at risk. Because of them and because of you, I was able to be successful, because the men and women at Temple Station really are among the hardest-working men and women of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. I always brag that Temple Station leads the division in arrest stats, which means our guys are working very, very hard despite the challenges. They continue to take people to jail, and they don't let the, the politics get in the way. They continue to do a good job. So, with that, I won't take much more time, but I leave you in good hands with Lieutenant George Mesa, who has been here at Temple Station for over three years. He's been my right-hand man as my operations lieutenant for over a year now, maybe a little year and a half, and he's, he's been the second-in-command, and he understands, he knows a lot of you already, he understands the needs of each of the cities, including Temple City, and you're going to be in great hands. He's the acting captain until the department goes through an interview process, but he's great. He's done a fantastic job and will continue to do so. So, thank you, Temple City. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commander.
Thank you.
And if I may have the council join me in presenting the certificate to the Commander, and if we could also get a photo.
Can we get Deputy Uli and, uh? M.O.A. Have a smile. There you go. All right, great. Thank you. Do you have a phone? All right. Good luck. Thank you. Congratulations to you. Come be a stranger.
I won't. Won't go away.
All right. Next, we will move on to public comments on items not listed on the agenda. We do have a number of speakers tonight. First, I would like to call up Ms. Carmina Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable city council members.
My name's Carmina Lopez, and I represent the LA County Regional Park and Open Space
District, also known as RPOSD. We are responsible for administering Measure A, which was approved by 75% of LA County voters in November of 2016. It generates approximately $109 million per year through an annual parcel tax of 1.7 cents per square feet of improved property for the acquisition and improvement of parks. I am here this evening to introduce you to our technical assistance program, also known as TAP. TAP provides technical assistance primarily through grant funding to cities within LA County that have been identified as high or very high need in regards to parkland. The determination as to the level of park need is based on the findings of the Park Needs Assessment of 2016. In July 2022, based on your city's status as high need, we allocated Temple City $185,000 in TAP funding to be used for technical assistance services. This TAP funding can be used in a variety of ways, all aimed at increasing your, your city's overall park acreage. TAP pays for professional services such as conducting a land inventory, community outreach, environmental tests or surveys, real estate negotiations, and planning and design. In meeting with other TAP-eligible cities, there has been a wide range of project ideas discussed for new parkland. For acquisition projects, ideas include pocket parks, linear parks, or passive parks. Other types of open space uses, ideas include dog parks, gate parks, botanical and community gardens, and green alleys. Keep in mind, projects are not limited to acquisition. Cities can also enter into a long-term lease agreement with utility companies, the railroad, or Caltraps, to develop their unused land into parkland and open spaces. Your city has already executed a master agreement with RPOSD to access your TAP funds, and we have been in communication with your city staff earlier in the year regarding the TAP program. Please know that TAP is here to assist you in getting your park project started. I should know there is a deadline of December 31st, 2024, to encumber your TAP funds. If you have any questions, I have left our contact information with you all. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to the partnership.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council?
No. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you, appreciate you, Ms. Lopez, for coming here tonight and sharing this information with us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right. Next, we have Jackie Fong.
Hi, Mayor and council members. Good evening. My name's Jackie Fong, but I'm, I'm not going to speak, but my neighbor, who's, who's a better speaker than me, but we have a bunch of representative from our neighborhood to talk about the recent SCE power outage and power surge problem.
Thank you, Jackie. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Roy. I'm joined here by several of our good neighbors in the Olima and Treilani District of Temple City. It's near the high school area. The reason why we're here today is to bring to light a concern that we've had with power outage concerns, namely, power surges that result from these outages, and they cause a tremendous amount of damage to dozens of homes in our section of Temple City. It's quite mysterious as to what's causing these surges, but what we do know right now is that when these surges happen, many of the houses on our streets are suffering from a tremendous economic and also time loss from having to deal with all of these problems. So, for example, in my own home, based on the last surge that happened about a month ago, we lost our water heater, we lost our clothes washer, dryer, solar panels, a significant amount of damage. I mean, everybody's time is precious, so I'll keep things short, but needless to say, it was tens of thousands of dollars of damage for our own home, in my case, and our other neighbors joining here, joining here tonight. Some of them are represented here tonight. They also suffer tremendous loss of economic repair and also the time and energy spent on all of these repairs. The reason why we are concerned is, actually, this has kind of developed into a bit of a pattern. The first time was in 2020. It was during the, right after COVID started, actually, so it was in April of 2020. We had a power outage then, and that was a week-long outage, and the reason that was cited by SCE was a goose flew into an overhead transformer.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
A goose flew into an overhead transformer. And then, when the power was restored about a week later, we all realized that some sort of surge had happened and caused a tremendous amount of damage. Jackie kindly presented a list here of the, some of the information we have. Yeah, so various neighbors on our street reported losses in the ranges of $3,000 all the way up to $10,000 for various repairs that happened back in 2020, and then similarly, this happened again just recently. So, we're concerned about the infrastructure in Temple City, in our section, because our good neighbors in other areas, they suffer from the same outages, but they don't have the same surges that caused this damage. So, we're wondering if we might be able to seek some assistance to get SCE to help look into these matters and figure out what's going on with the infrastructure.
Where's the area again?
It's on Olima Street and Treilani.
Next to the high school.
Next to the high school, correct. Directly south of the high school.
Is it just one block, or is it several blocks?
From what we can tell, it's a couple of blocks, all of Olima Street where we live, and then some of our neighbors on the opposite side of the block, on Treilani, are also affected as well.
Have you filed claims with SCE?
We have, but they've been denied twice. So, we filed originally back in 2020, the first time it happened, and again, the second time, they've been denied.
They've been denied?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for sharing this with us tonight. Our city manager, Mr. Brian Cook here, will get in touch with you to find out more detailed information. Like you mentioned, Mr. Jackie Fong has a list of incidents over the last two, two or three years. If you have that information, if you could share that with us, including, you mentioned a denial letter for the, for the claims.
Yes.
We'll do our best to get in touch with SCE to see if there is any kind of connection we can make, although I will say we are independent agencies, so to speak.
Understood, of course.
So, again, our influence is, is limited, but we certainly are sympathetic to what you've described, and we'll do what we can to maybe get you in the right direction.
Thank you. We appreciate it. I should say that we understand that the influence may be limited, but we're also at our wits' end. So, that's, you know, kind of speaking to the level of desperation we have, because, you know, our little kids, they're impacted. It's impacting everybody in a pretty significant way, so.
And I'd like you to know, though, that unfortunately, it's not just your area. I have too have been affected where I live. It's nowhere close to where you live.
Really?
Oh, okay.
And I have not been thrilled by the customer service by Edison as well.
Right, right.
But we will definitely look into it.
Yeah. I mean, again, I don't want to take up everybody's time, but if I could just elaborate a little bit, you know, when we contacted SCE directly, they were kind enough to lend an ear, but it's a large bureaucratic organization, so many of our concerns fell on deaf ears. We're not so much concerned about the claims portion. We're concerned about the long-term infrastructure. You know, we would like to get attention from somebody responsible to, to figure out how we can stay connected to the grid without suffering a tremendous amount of damage every couple of years.
I do have a question. Have you spoken or been in touch with the California Public Utilities Commission?
Yes. My wife filed a formal complaint last week.
All right. I think Edison looks at that a little bit closer.
That's our hope. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Mr., actually, no, that's for a different one. Are there any other public comments for items not listed on the agenda? All right. If there's no other public comments on items not on the agenda, we will close public comments and move on to the consent calendar. Are there any consent calendar items that we wish to pull or discuss?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. The consent calendar has been approved. We move on to item eight, public hearing. Eight A is introduction and first reading of ordinance number 23-1072, amending title eight, stormwater pollutant elimination, and sections nine dash one N dash 10, low-impact development standards and green streets of the Temple City Municipal Code to comply with the municipal separate storm sewer system MS4 permit. And so, I will turn this over to Mr. Coyne. You will be presenting.
Good evening.
Mr. Cook, do you have anything to say on eight A before we turn it over to Mr. Coyne?
Thank you, Mayor Mann, and members of the council. Before you tonight is the item related to stormwater compliance. Stormwater compliance is a pretty complex issue. One item that we'll be talking about a little bit more, and we'll be dealing with it on the staff level, is the issue of permeable pavers. The issue that we have with the MS4 permit, and just in terms of the jargon, MS4 permit is what we as a, a government agency are obligated to ensure the quality of the water that goes into the stormwater system. It is a very complex, it is a highly technical process that has taken many, many years. John Hunter and Associates and Cameron is with us today, who are, who provide us with the technical expertise in terms of dealing with stormwater compliance. We're running up against some deadlines in the next year with stormwater compliance, but one of the major elements that we can institute and that are, and we are obligated under the law to do is to have a low-impact development ordinance and a green streets code. One of the areas that kind of gets a little bit sticky is, and Andrew will go over it a little bit, is what, who, who, where does it apply and how does it apply? One of the areas that we're going to have to explore a little bit more is the issue of when people put pavers in, what, how, what is permeable, what is not? That is something that we're going to tackle as much as we can on the administrative side as staff, and, but the MS4 permit doesn't really speak to it. So, it kind of puts us as an agency in a little bit of a quandary in terms of ensuring compliance, because the idea is that with the low-impact development code, which Andrew will go over in a little more detail, is the idea is for water, rainwater, to percolate down into the system and into the water table. Just some additional context is that for most of the San Gabriel Valley, the stormwater, the rainwater that's cap, that is, that hits the San Gabriel Valley, a good portion of it, closer to 90%, actually goes into the water table, so our underground water storage. But because of how bad the drought has been over the last 20 years, the water tables throughout the San Gabriel Valley are still at about 50% of capacity. So, this is an effort to do that in, in order to, to restore the underground water storage that we have, but also balance against the, the regulations related to stormwater. So, it's, can be a little frustrating for us as an agency, because so much of the stormwater actually percolates into the underground water storage in this part of the San Gabriel Valley, but having these low-impact development codes and, and green streets codes meets the compliance measures of the MS4 permit, which Andrew will go over. But one area that we're still going to be tackling a little bit more, seeing how much we can handle it on the administrative side, is those pavers that, so that we're kind of not only meeting the spirit, but also the intent of what the lid ordinance is trying to do and stormwater compliance as well. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Andrew, if that's okay, Mayor Mann. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner, oh, Commissioner, sorry. Good evening, council members.
Alan, you called us Commissioner?
I'm so used to standing in front of the planning commission.
You're too used to coming to the planning commission meetings.
Good evening, Mayor Mann and city council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you today. You're being asked to consider a set of proposed code amendments that will bring the city's lid and greet streets ordinances into compliance with the latest MS4 permit. And just to give you some context, the, the latest MS4 permit was adopted in July of 2021, and the overall goal, as Brian has already mentioned, is to ensure acceptable water quality standards, protect waterways from polluted discharges, and to also establish low-impact development strategies for construction sites. And this image that our consultant provided us with just gives you kind of a visual of what the overall goal is, which is water quality, to prevent pollutants from getting out into our waterways and into the ocean. So, in summary, what does the new MS4 permit require in, in regards to LID, which is low-impact The first is that back in 2012, the MS4 permit required industrial and commercial projects that created or replaced 5,000 square feet or more of impervious surface area. And just to give you some context, the latest MS four permit was adopted in July of 2021, and the overall goal, as Brian has already mentioned, is to ensure acceptable water quality standards, protect waterways from polluted discharges, and to also establish low-impact development strategies for construction sites. And this image that our consultant provided us with just gives you kind of a visual of what the overall goal is, which is water quality, to prevent pollutants from getting out into our waterways and into the ocean. So in summary, what does the new MS four permit require in regards to L I D, which is low-impact development? The first is that back in 2012, the MS four permit required industrial and commercial projects that created or replaced 5,000 square feet or more of impervious surface area to incorporate L I D systems into their projects. In 2021, they expanded that, and now they're requiring it for any project that creates or replaces 5,000 square feet or more of impervious surface area. I know this is long, but on existing developments with 10,000 square feet or more of impervious area. The key words here is "any project" and now "projects that have 10,000 square feet or more of impervious surface area." So in 2012, it was just limited to industrial and commercial sites, and now it's "any project." How does that impact Temple City? Well, in short, not very much, and that's primarily because most of the projects in Temple City are very small. It would be, you know, hard to find a project that has 10,000 square feet or more of impervious surface area in the city, most are very small in comparison to that. This new requirement will impact large residential projects, and it could also potentially impact large city projects like libraries and community centers and parks, but those types of things do not happen very often in our city. So the proposed amendments that we are bringing before you will bring our city's code into compliance with the new MS four permit. The first thing it's going to do is remove any references to the old 2012 permit. It will also incorporate all the updated definitions that are now in the 2021 MS four permit, and it will also incorporate by reference all of the B M P, and B M P stands for Best Management Practice Requirements for projects. Those B M Ps have not changed since 2012, they're the same types of B M Ps, and at the end of the presentation, I have some images that can kind of illustrate what those are. But by adding it into the code, by referencing it to the new MS four permit, it will help the city with enforcement and making sure that projects throughout the city comply.
And if I can add one aspect to that as well, as we are kind of going through the process with the Water Board, the B M Ps, the Water Board is essentially expecting to see that as the commitment from the city to ensure that we're doing these projects or making an effort. I've discussed with you some of the struggles that we've had with some of the projects going forward, but while this was not incorporated into the code prior, it, and it's not, I don't believe it's statutorily required to have the P M P in the ordinance, it is more of a gesture to the Water Board to say, yes, we're committed to stormwater compliance, we're committed to try to make these B M Ps part of what we do from a capital project standpoint, and where we can reasonably and cost-effectively implement those projects. And we'll be coming back to the council during the budget study session, because we do have allocation of Measure W funds that can help with some of these B M P projects, but with some of the cost escalations we're seeing on some of the bigger projects that are happening on a regional basis, we may have to come back to the council and scale down some of those projects that are, for lack of a better term, a little bit more cost-effective, but the reason you have, again, this is not statutorily required under the lid ordinance to be in compliance, but it is a strong gesture to the Water Board and something we as staff recommend.
It might be helpful, since Brian mentioned that, just to give you some visuals of what the B M Ps are, and if I just move ahead here. One B M P is what we call a bioswale, and it helps to collect water, so for example, water in a parking lot would drain into a landscaped area and then percolate into the ground. Another one is where you have something called infiltration, where you have these large tanks under the parking lot that would also collect the water and then allow it to slowly percolate into the ground. Very similar to that is below-ground cisterns, the same thing, the goal is to collect rainwater under a project site, like in this case, it would be like a park where they put this under, for example, like an athletic field. And then there's also B M Ps that are meant to prevent erosion and pollutants from getting into the storm drains, so this would be like gravel bags that keep the dirt from running into the curb. This would be some, these would be linear controls that would prevent erosion, and then this would be an inlet protection, so when there's a construction site, they are required to cover up the storm drain so that the pollutants do not get into there while construction is going on. So that just kind of gives you an example, and then this is also another method for preventing, when trucks are coming out of a site, from the dirt and gravel from getting into the street.
And could we put a bioswale at the parking lot that we built on Temple City?
We have systems like this in that parking lot, we also have systems like this, I believe, on Rosemeat Boulevard. You notice it when there's those cutouts in the curb that allow the water to get into there. And then just to summarize the recommendation for this evening, we would recommend that you find this ordinance exempt from CEQA and introduce ordinance number 23-1072 for first reading by title only and waive further reading, and then schedule the second reading for April 18th, 2023. I'm sorry, May 2nd, I believe it's going to actually be May 2nd, I apologize. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you. Any council questions, starting with Councilmember Viscara?
No questions.
Councilmember Yu?
No questions, thank you.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Just a quick question, I was looking through the ordinance, and I know there's quite some severe penalties for violation of some of these things. I didn't find any discretionary or exceptions for severe weather, such as we've had recently, that may impact some of these mitigation things. I mean, is there something in there that provides for that, or do we anticipate that coming forward?
I can speak to that a little bit, and then maybe Cameron might have something else to add. The fines are very high. That is mostly meant as a deterrent. In the time that I've been here over the last eight years, we have not written any citations in that amount. It's typically something that we lay down with a contractor, letting them know, if you don't get this problem fixed quickly, this could result in a very large fine, and that often gets us compliance very quickly. So it's mostly meant as a deterrent in that way.
It just seems to me that everybody could be in compliance, and all of a sudden, we have one of these, what do they call them, what are the rivers they call now?
Atmospheric rivers.
Atmospheric rivers, which I never heard of before this year, but what if that happens, and then all of a sudden, we got a problem?
Yeah, it's more about us, if we, when we do have issues, so for instance, you might have a site where you have a single-family house being built, and the grading occurs, and now you have kind of a lake on site. If the contractor is taking that muddy water and dumping it into the storm drain, we come out right away as soon as we find out about that, and then we tell them, you need to correct the situation immediately, and then they correct it. So we don't write them a citation if there's a violation right away, we require them to correct the situation.
All right, I think that's a good way to handle it.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
So my question is, I mean, kind of alluding to Mayor Protem's question, I understand the measures that are in place to prevent the construction work from affecting the water quality. Now, some of these examples are of more permanent features, like the bioswells and the infiltration galleries, so I presume these are for private developments, right? So can you, is there anything within the MS four that requires long-term tracking or monitoring of the performance of these systems? And if so, what is our role in that?
So, yeah, there's both under our small-site ordinance and guidelines and under the larger sites, which is more than an acre in size.
Oh, 5,000.
5,000 square feet. There are two different tracking systems, and we report those numbers annually to the Water Board. We are required to provide what features are on site on each of those sites, any new construction site.
Okay, so we only have to report the features, there's no quantitative monitoring or measuring?
There is some of that as well, it's a whole spreadsheet of information we have to keep track of.
Okay. And then there are certain thresholds that we have to meet from a quantitative standpoint?
They're not necessarily, well, yes and no. So our job on an annual basis is to report to them how we've complied with the MS four permit. When we do the actual project review, then there are, then there are requirements under the MS four permit for how that project has to be designed to ensure that we are infiltrating as much stormwater onto the site as possible.
Okay, but they would never come back and say, is it actually working?
Yeah, that's, it's...
Actually, I have a follow-up question to that now that you have mentioned that. I know on large properties, at least for the county, we have our own N P D S permits that we need to get, but I was wondering, does the city monitor if the contractor is getting an N P D S permit? Because there are a number of monitoring and filing requirement, reporting requirements on that, do we track those?
Yes, so we track them at the time that the permit is issued, and then we report that information to the Water Board on a regular basis, and then on top of that, any time prior to any sort of rain event, the building inspector and the code enforcement inspectors go out and look at all the sites to make sure they're in compliance, and then we contact the contractor if there's something that's not right. And then even after the rain event, to ensure that people aren't dumping water into the storm drain, we go back out again to ensure that.
That's great.
And then to your other point, Mayor Mann, Cameron actually sits, and Andrew sometimes sits on some of the meetings with, there's been a couple meetings with the Water Board folks in terms of them coming back and saying, how effective has this been? That can sometimes be a little bit of, not a bone of contention, but can be a little challenging, so, but in terms of our, in terms of the processes and protocols that we have in place, they meet both the spirit and intent of the law.
Okay, yeah, I think my question was more intended to see what the Water Boards take on that issue was, so thanks for clearing that up.
Thank you.
And my last question is, goes back to Andrew's emphasis on any project that creates or replaces 5,000 square feet of impervious area on an existing development with 10,000 square feet, so I want to make sure I understand this. So if you, first, you have to look at the existing condition, and then you check a box saying, okay, it's 10,000 square feet of impervious area or more. Then if they're, then post-development, if there's more than 5,000, that checks the other box?
Then if they're replacing more than 5,000 square feet of impervious space on that, then they have to comply with the lid requirements.
So essentially, they basically have to have a net reduction in impervious space?
So, for instance, we had a project site at the southwest corner of Rosemeat in Las Tunas that was undergoing significant remodel, and they were planning to replace all of the pavement. That pavement area included more than 10,000 square feet, and so because they were replacing more than the 5,000 number you see on this board, they would need to comply with lid requirements, so they would have to install some lid features. In that instance, specifically, they did install lid features.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, then...
Actually, may I have one more question?
Sure.
So after we adopt this ordinance, Mr. Reema, do we need to submit back to Water Board for their approval, like, or does anybody need to look at this and say, yeah, you've complied with the MS four permit?
Do you know about that? No. No, that's not a requirement.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so now we will open the public hearing, and I do have one request to speak from Mr. Steve Stafford.
Mayor Mann, Mayor Protem Chavez, city council members, city staff, one thing I'd like to know is how enforcement's going to be done, and one of the things that I see time after time is the tow companies do not clean up, they leave their debris in their gasoline, and the oils from the vehicles after an accident, it goes down the storm drain into our stormwater. What I'd like to know is how we're going to enforce that, and what the arm of enforcement's going to be on situations like that? That can be a big problem, and it's been a big problem with the tow companies, I've seen them drive away and leave everything there after the accident. That means the oil, the gas, whatever was spilled, the debris, it all ends up down the storm drain, and with our recent atmospheric rivers, that only made it worse. I applaud you for doing this ordinance, because it'll make some improvements and make things better, and they need to be better. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stafford. Any other public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close public comments. Any final council questions or comments?
All right, I'll say all in all, thank you, everyone who worked on this. It is important, and it's important that we bring ourselves in compliance. I know both Councilmember Yu and I work for the county, so we have some familiarity with how this impacts projects, so we are glad to see that we are on track to do so.
If there's no other comments or questions, may I have a motion for this?
Mr. Mayor, I move to find ordinance 23-1072 exempt from CEQA per section 15061 and section 15308 of the CEQA guidelines. Introduce ordinance number 23-1072 for first reading by title only, waive further reading of ordinance number 23-1072, and schedule a second reading for April...
I think it's May 2nd.
May 2nd.
May 2nd, yeah. Staff reports is still the old version, sorry, yeah, for May 2nd, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes, and Madam Clerk, may you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you. Ordinance number 23-1072, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temple City, California, amending title eight, stormwater pollutant elimination, and section nine dash one N dash ten, low-impact development standards and green streets of the Temple City Municipal Code to comply with the municipal separate storm sewer system MS four permit.
Great, thank you very much. And next, we'll move on to unfinished business, we have none, new business, we have none, and we go to update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Mann, and members of the council, two quick things. Our Easter celebration that we had a week ago also included a community outreach component with S W A Architects getting several hundred comments, as we had a very captive audience at the event, that will provide us with information that we'll be able to bring back to the council with some concept plans, and then if the council wishes in that, a standing committee afterwards to move the project along with S W A to actually have the plans in place and timing for the installation of two new playgrounds. We got some very solid feedback, and I think it'll be helpful with the council to see where, what elements the community really would like to see in the playgrounds, and in fact, some elements they don't want to see as well, so that'll be important.
Mr. Cook, on that note, what kind of timeframe are we looking at in terms of something that can be brought back to council?
If you don't mind, I'll let Mr. Matsumoto come back. Because he's the project manager on the staff side and working with S W A Architects.
Good evening, Mayor Mann, members of the city council, it's, one, great to be back off of paternity leave, so hitting the ground running. I did, yes, shaved, got a haircut.
I didn't recognize you.
Had to make sure I came back professionally, but yes, in terms of the project itself, we did outline a specific review process for the development of the concept design. First phase was the community outreach, we initially were going to do two phases of that, but we did receive over 400 responses from our Easter outreach, so we want to move forward with that concept development, so we'll be doing that in phases, that should be anywhere from four to six weeks. So we'll be doing that in phases, that should be anywhere from four to six weeks, um, to develop. Um, we're looking at bringing, uh, that to the subcommittee, city council subcommittee, uh, standing committee to review and provide some initial comments and feedback. Um, then it'll go to the Parks and Recreation Commission for first review and then to city council for final approval. Um, in terms of the timeline, we should get a little bit more definitive, um, scope, and that's something that we can share with the council as we draft that, working with our consultants. Um, but the concept development phase, we did earmark about four to six weeks for that, so we would be at the start of that point right now.
Great, thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you, Adam. Uh, lastly, neighborhood watch, again, Thursday, this coming Thursday night at 5:30 at Cloverly Elementary, 56, uh, 5476 Cloverly Avenue. Uh, dinner provided for those who are coming at 5:30. Um, our team will, will be there, um, giving a very robust presentation. We start off the meeting now with a review of crime, of the previous crime stats and crime trends that are happening in the area, and then going to, into some other practical presentations as well. So Deputy Bowie and the team will be there on Thursday night. That's it, uh, that, that concludes my report, Mayor Mann.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cook. Next, um, we'll go to the update from our city attorney.
Uh, no legal update tonight, sir, no, no legal news to report.
Okay, great. Next, council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings, do we have any reports?
Okay. I don't, I don't have any reports, but since we're on this thing, I had talked to Brian earlier about, I know that they were in the planning stages of this 100-year anniversary. And, uh, I know it right now, it seems to be at staff level, and I know that, uh, historical society is working on that thing on their end of it. I'm just wondering if it would be appropriate for us to form an ad hoc committee to at least have the council be part of that discussion and to see what efforts maybe we could add to that or help with it or whatever. But again, that's up to you, I'm not saying, and maybe something for you to consider for the next meeting. I don't think it's any great rush, but I, I, I don't seem like we're getting any kind of information on this. And it's, and I don't know if there's a, is there a date that's been set? There's, is there a date for the 100th year anniversary? Uh, maybe Mr. Matsumoto has more information than I know he got up, but Brian, if you want to.
Uh, yes, Mayor Protem Chavez, uh, we are currently in, working in partnership with this, uh, historical society um, and are in the beginning stages of developing a more definitive plan to celebrate the centennial um, for this current year. Um, there are some events that are being planned by the historical society, um, leading up to what we hope to be kind of the larger community-wide celebration, which would take place in conjunction with the Fall Festival and car show. It would be a rebranded centennial celebration, but that would be a, uh, early fall, um, event. So we have met internally at the staff level. We're meeting with the historical society actually tomorrow, um, to have further discussion, and if it's at the council's discretion to form an ad hoc committee, then at that point, we could, um, yeah, bring the council on board as well to provide, um, information, context, or ideas on, um, what we hope to be that larger celebration taking place in, uh, early fall.
Okay, well, then maybe rather than jumping off and forming a committee at this time, maybe we'll wait to hear what comes back from those talks. Uh, not that, I don't have any doubt that you guys can certainly handle that, but is there a 100th anniversary date? Is there, what date is that? Jerry, do you know?
May 24th.
So May 24th would be 100 years.
Yes.
And we're probably not going to have anything before then, I would imagine, or are we?
Not by the city, but the historical society is planning on doing a, I believe it's a scavenger hunt?
Uh, well, last week, it's a barbecue dinner on May the 28th.
28th.
It's after the 24th, but, yeah, it would be nice, I think, I mean, I don't know, the rest of the council feels, but to hear about some of these things, maybe the historical society can send a representative over and let us know. I know they sent a newsletter out, but I don't know that we all get that newsletter. I get it because I'm a member, but I don't know who they send it to, but it just seems that we've been kind of in the dark on a lot of this and, and, uh, and I know I've had people asking me, hey, what's going on for the 100th anniversary? You know, and, and to a lot of people, I think it's a big deal when they don't really understand it's, it's not a 100th year anniversary of the city, it's a 100-year anniversary of the, I guess, would you would say, the township?
The founding?
Of Temple or whatever, but, you know, we're, we're, we're far less than that as a city, of course, but and still, it's a big deal, I think, to many people, and, you know, when they ask me, I don't, I say, well, I don't really know what's going on in this city, so. Maybe we could wait for some reports back.
Sure, sure, yeah.
And see if it's something that me, we, we might want to do to kind of help along, because obviously, we're the,
I would agree with.
We're, we're the big, we're the big guns, we're the ones with the money and the, and the funds and everything. Uh, you would think that they would come to us initially and say, hey, we'd like to get some help.
That, that's the discussion that we'll be having tomorrow of, um, having some of the more of the financial and staffing, um, support in terms of doing a larger celebration. Um, just, we haven't fully vetted out the details, but one of the components that we are, um, talking about as part of that fall centennial celebration is actually having a, a, a larger parade. So having that as one of those components where we can invite our various community members to participate in, and then having a expanded, um, celebration at the park, at Temple City Park.
No, I appreciate it, and I, I know probably Greg's getting heartburn right now, saying this is not on the agenda, but, but. No, I, that's a good, thank you for letting us know, because I think that's helpful, so.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with, um, Mayor Protem Chavez. Uh, I, I knows, I guess, perhaps because I'm, I've been part of some of the side discussions with some members of the historical socie, society as well, staff, so I, I know there's work being done on it. But at the same time, I, I know one of the conclusions that the historical society arrived at was that you're not going to be able to cobble together a massive festival in such a short time, given how limited their resources are, and so I think staff, a lot to their credit, um, thought outside the box and looked at how we can, look at what we have existing. And we know we have concerts, so we don't want to be in conflict with that, so, um, this idea of trying to combine it with some of our other celebrations, like the Fall Festival and, and the rest of that, I think that's a great idea.
There isn't really a drop dead date on this, I mean.
No.
We've got a whole year, really.
Yeah, the, the feedback was that instead of limiting ourselves to the May 24th date, that this could be something that we can kind of look at from a year-long perspective. It ge, it gives us more options to do something bigger. Um, so I think, um, I, I agree with your suggestion. Um, after staff meets tomorrow with the historical society, we can look at forming an ad hoc committee.
Maybe we could, uh, the next agenda have a kind of an update on what the progress is.
Absolutely.
On that celebration, and then we could talk, then we could properly talk about it as an agenda item.
That's a good, that's a good idea.
All right, thank you.
And, and thank you, Director Matsumoto.
Of course.
All right, next we go to council items separate from the regular agenda, uh, council member you?
Uh, nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Iskara?
Um, can I go back to Dee, the frivolous part element?
Oh, sure, sure, if you want to, yeah.
I'm trying to remember, when did we have the meeting on our, our latest meeting?
About three weeks ago.
I think you reported it at the last meeting.
We reported it.
Yeah.
Okay, I gotta remember now. Have, have we heard, Adam, have we heard anything on, on the tile work and the?
I shouldn't sit so far back, I should know better. Have a closer seat next time. Um, I am checking in with our, um, with, um, with Liz, who had taken that project on while I was out. Um, I do know that we were moving forward, or, or the subcommittee, art subcommittee had identified a tile mirror list, um, to do that work, so, um, I've been getting up to speed, and then what I can do is, as part of the weekly updates, I can provide, um, kind of our current status and, um, how far along and how long we anticipate, um, for that to be completed.
I think we had a concern that the, the, the fellow that they found, the artisan, uh, might take on another, take on other projects.
He, he is committed to us, we're just trying to nail down the final contractual language with, with us.
Oh, so we have gone that far?
We, we, we've gone down that far, yes.
Okay, that's all I want to know, thank you.
Councilmember Iskara, anything else besides that one?
Um.
Separate, separate from the agenda?
Uh, on, on Sunday, I went to the historical society, uh, presentation, and Jerry put on a, a presentation on, on the history of, of this area. I, I don't want to say just Temple City, because it was much more than that. And, uh, which was really interesting, I think most of you have heard either all about it or, or parts of it. And, uh, there's a lot of history here, and there was a lot of history that, that went into this area, not just Temple City, and, you know, it, it, it was, it affected much of the San Gabriel Valley. So it was a good presentation, and, uh, I recommend, uh, attending, uh, historical society events when they occur, because they need the support and, and it's a fun thing.
It's on your website, Jerry?
Yes.
It's on your website?
Did you fine tune the sound?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem Chavez?
Thank you. I just had a kind of a quick question and maybe an observation. In driving down Las Tunas on my way home today, I still notice, and I don't know where we stand, and I just maybe forgot, and I'm sure you addressed it, where do we stand with this Las Tunas? I don't know, I didn't see it on our ad hoc committee, but didn't we have a beautification ad hoc at one time? And I don't see it listed now. The reason I ask is that, in particular, those, those flower, uh, what do you call them?
Planters.
Planters. I mean, I, I counted at least from Rosemead to, to City Hall, or to wherever they end, Temple City Boulevard, I think, there's probably at least five or six that have graffiti on them. And then those who don't, that don't have graffiti are all stained and black. It looks like just maybe some moss or just not taken care of, but they just look really, really bad. There's no flowers, there's no plants in them. It appears that they're just primarily being used for trash and cigarette butts. Um, I just, I, you know, maybe we could get a report out in the future about where we're going and what's going to happen. I mean, to me, there seems to be some very low-hanging fruit as far as getting Las Tunas to look a little better, and one would be, for me anyway, just to remove those things. Because I don't know if we're going to keep them, but if we are going to keep them, then let's clean them up at least and put some plants in them. I don't think, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's water to those things. I think we have to handwater them, don't we?
Yeah, there is no, there is no irrigation that.
And I'm assuming that if we do move them, they've been there so long, there's probably something underneath there that probably isn't going to look as great either, so something's going to have to be done to clean the sidewalk off or something, but.
I can place on the agenda an item kind of a general update.
If you don't mind, Mayor, uh, just so we can, because, you know, like I said, I think there's things that we can do which probably aren't going to be too expensive, just to kind of clean it up a little bit. And I know, and another thing, and again, the trees that we have there are, they present a very pretty canopy, but at the same time, they do leave a mess on the sidewalk. And I wish I could say that most of our merchants on Las Tunas take the responsibility of cleaning their area in front of them. Unfortunately, they don't, and if you go down Las Tunas any time of the week, there's a lot of mess on that sidewalk, and I don't know, do we have a program where the city actually cleans the sidewalks? Or, or blows them down or does something? I mean, we don't put them on, we obviously don't want to make them part of the storm water, because we heard that problem tonight. But what are we doing in that regard?
You know, haven't there been cities that have removed the ficus because they're, they're a headache?
There are cities that have removed ficus trees with.
Our ficus trees.
Some challenges, I'll put it that way.
Analysis right there.
Our staff does a really good job on the, on the urban forestry front of actually managing the growth of those ficus trees in ways that are better than other communities have.
They're very well trimmed, there's no question about it.
They do a good job. Um, in terms of the, of the, with the staffing we have, we could do a better schedule of blowing and other things. It's once a week right now, but that's probably not enough for the level.
To be honest with you.
Of, of what we would do, so what we can come back with, with a report to the council on just some general aesthetic improvements on, on Las Tunas is that we include that as, what would it take to improve the maintenance schedule?
I, I thought you told me that you steam clean them twice a year?
Yeah, contractually, we do it.
Well, that's good, part of the year, but they, remember, they drop and they leave.
Yeah, 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 and I actually asked you before if we can.
Increase that.
Increase the frequency of that.
Yeah.
But now, but now, it, the different stages of the year, depending, right now, it doesn't appear that what's dropping is making the black marks. It's more just the, the parts of the tree that are just falling on the ground, leaves and just debris. And i, it's just all over the place, and I'm thinking, if we could do a better job in cleaning that up and then remove those hideous planters, I mean, to me, that would be a long ways into really shaping up that boulevard. Uh, of course, there are other things that are, they're going to be a little more costly. I know we've talked about it before, such as replacing the benches or painting them, um, and the receptacles, the trash receptacles, things like that. But, uh, maybe it's time to re-invent that ad hoc to look into those issues. Because I thought we did have a beautification.
We had it and, and we sunset.
Just settled.
It was dismantled.
Yeah, so, anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up, but, and I'm not, I'm not bringing it up to complain, because I know that the, I know the challenges we face in that area, but I think we, at least we can do a little bit better job and without too much, uh, effort, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, that's all.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I think, um, perhaps the last time we had a discussion that included elements of that was when we were discussing the ARPA funding.
Right.
So, uh, and, and speaking of that, perhaps, an update can consider the context of which ARPA funds we've committed to certain projects, what's remaining, that's not yet committed, as well as plans that are in progress. Um, because offering us sort of the big picture of what else is happening could help us make better decisions or provide better direction with respect to what Mayor Protem is, is bringing up.
Certainly.
And Mayor, if I could just add to that, actually, I think Mayor Protem would remember, once upon a time, we went to a, a conference whereby they were talking about business improvement district, and one of the things they did, I think City Ventura, was actually adding planters. And, but they have a fund, they have a source of funding to do that, so maybe.
Well, I can tell you that those planters at one time were very nice.
Yeah.
When we had plants in them and we had, and people would, would say, well, those look great.
Yeah.
But they have gotten in so much disrepair, it seems like, for just lack of any kind of effort to keep them up, that they just aren't, they're just, it's not a, a nice situation.
But.
Well, they're, they're awfully weathered, is what the problem is.
Yeah, that's, that's a good word, they are very weathered, and I don't know, maybe.
Maybe we could just improve them.
Or just spray, or, you know, get a, one of those water sprayers out or something, but it seems like a lot of the darkness on them is like, uh, like mold, you know, just maybe from the weather too, so.
Or from those trees.
Yeah. I, I'm sorry, I have one more thing I forgot to bring up. You had mentioned, when we were discussing the, um, the storm water issue, uh, there was, we were going to discuss permeable pavers as part of that, that.
Yes.
Did we forget that?
No, well, we'll.
Is that coming back?
We'll, we'll either bring that back or what we can do, we'll deal with it on the staff level as well.
Oh, okay, because I had that in my notes, and I thought, okay, but we never talked about it, so it's going to come later. All right, thank you, thank you.
All right, um, that's for, from my end. Uh, I do want to say that the Easter egg hunt was well-attended. I think, uh, it was, I think everyone who was there expressed appreciation for the city bringing back a lot of these events, especially for the kids. Uh, I know my kids enjoyed it, even though, um, for Jacob being almost three years old, he didn't quite understand the concept of a egg hunt. So when you match up against seasoned egg hunters, uh, he came away. He came away with zero eggs, because he just stood there.
Wait, wait, how does a mayor's son have to get an egg?
Well, well, to, to Mr. Matsumoto's credit, uh, he gave him some consolation eggs.
Okay.
Um, because he stood there, he stood there with an empty basket. Um, but Adrian is now seasoned, so he was out there, you know, with the rest of the kids. So, so thank you Parks and Rec for always being. there with the rest of the kids. So thank you, Parks and Rec, for always being, doing an outstanding job with that. There was also a massive line for the pancakes and coffee, so that was very good to see. And I also went by the outreach for the parks, and I saw all the stickers that were in the different options. And you could tell what some people really wanted, and the ones with not so many stickers, there was a pretty good contrast. So I'm looking forward to what staff and SWA is bringing back to us in the future. I'm glad we got that level of engagement, which is really good to see. And I thought it was a well-placed, in terms, relative to everything else that was going on in the parks. So anyone who was, had their kids doing the egg hunt, you were just, you couldn't miss it. So thank you for a job well-done by staff and SWA.
I want to get a real quick note on that. I have a secretary working on my building. It was on Monday. I was walking in, and we were walking in, and we got the elevator. And she was all excited. She says, oh, I'm glad to see we're doing something at Live Oak Park. And can we bring back the rocket ship?
Rocket ship?
No, I don't think that's going back. But they are excited about it. And so, you know, right from about, I mean, they're excited about it.
Yeah. And definitely, you can, I mean, just being around the playground area with my kids at Live Oak Park, you can hear occasional comments about the conditions of the turf and the equipment. But also, I also overheard people saying, oh, whoa, it looks like the city's taken steps to improving it. So I think there's a understanding that we have a commitment, that we're willing to invest and renovate both of our parks. So that was very encouraging to see. Also, last week, I had the pleasure of attending Congressmember Judy Chu's Artist, Artistic Discovery Awards Ceremony. And it just so happens, we had two Temple City High students who were amongst the top nine finalists. And that's top nine out of over 150 entries. And it turns out that the first place went to one of our high school students. Her name is Larissa. And so I think she wins a, I want to say a $10,000 scholarship? It might be more.
What was her project?
Well, yeah, it's a painting. We're kind of in the process of inviting them to one of our future council meetings.
Yeah, we have to bring in residents.
Yeah, so I were, I know Ms. Quo here has been helping us, and Liz, with our executive assistant, is also helping out with that. So you, I can't describe it. You have to kind of see it for yourself. But I just want to say it was a proud moment for all of us. I know Board President Donna Giorgino was there, as well as Superintendent Arcuna.
I think the painting gets hung in Washington DC for the next, the rest of the year.
Yes, yes. So every congressional district has a first-place winner, and they're prominently displayed in one of the main hallways at the Capitol for a year. And also, they will fly her and a guest out to DC to actually see them.
Wow, that's amazing.
Hang the painting.
Oh, neat.
Yeah, so that's a pretty amazing honor. And I know Donna mentioned that a couple years ago, in the height of COVID, we also had another Temple City High student that also won first place, but because of COVID, there wasn't the in-person ceremony. So it was a bit more muted. But that was very, very great to see. So I was glad I was there. Also, last Friday, La Rosa had a steam night for a lot of their kids, which I went, because my son also goes there. But it was well-attended. They had a lot of activities for students related to science, technology, engineering, and the arts. And a very, a lot of engagement, a lot of parents, a lot of kids, they had food trucks. So it was kind of like a mini community event in and of itself. So just want to shout out to the school district for a nice event.
And, you know, I would give that, that the school district has certainly stepped up in letting us know about the painting. If I don't, yeah, I don't, it was the last meeting, but I did go to Caesar Chavez Day at Emperor, and they put on a great event, too, and they let us know about that. So the news pass, unfortunately, has been a disconnect, but it seems, I don't know if it's because of our use superintendent, but we are getting more, you know, we're getting invited to a lot of things with the school district.
Yeah, I agree. And speaking of that, I believe we do have a standing committee meeting with the school district, which Mayor Protem Chavez and I are part of, which is next Thursday. And I know one of the things that we will be asking for on the agenda is related to the Centennial Celebration, since we know that's a community effort. That's, although, I agree with you, I think we are the big player in the room in terms of resources, staffing, and the ability to plan large events. But I've always emphasized, emphasized the need for collaboration between a lot of our community members, and the school district is one of those collaborative partners that we have, so...
We're the big dog.
Yes. So I'm looking forward to that discussion as well. All right. Next, we go on to an item that I thought we didn't have to go back to, but it's back. It's a, we will recess to the successor agency for the Temple City Community Development Agency meeting. So I will call that meeting to order. May we have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, thank you. Agency member Viscara?
Just me?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Agency member you?
Here.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Here.
Chairman?
Here.
I guess we have to excuse Agency Member Sternquist for cause.
If there's no objections, Agency Member Sternquist is excused. Consent calendar? May we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Yes.
All right. Motion second. Could we get a quick roll call vote for that, please?
Agency member Viscara?
Yes.
Agency member you?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Unfinished business for that? We have none. New business, none. Communications, none. Public comments? No public comments. I don't remember if we ever had public comments for that. Okay, we close public comments. Update from Executive Director and Agency Council?
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure, of course.
Since you peeked my interest by saying you don't expect this to come back, so maybe the Executive Director or the council can tell us, how much longer would this go on?
So the successor agency will turn over to the county, I believe, in 2025, or unless the obligations of the agency, the debt service agency, are met. And I believe that's 2025 as well. But I will check with our city treasurer and admin services director on that. But once, once the last payment has been made, the successor agency has wound down its operations, and it will essentially terminate. And anything else, any other obligations of the old redevelopment agency, if there are any, which I don't believe there are any for Temple City's former redevelopment agency, would then turn over to the county.
Or would we have any kind of obligations still to the successor agency as a city? Is there any money that we owe them?
I'll defer to your agency council, but...
Well, you don't have to tell us at this point. Maybe this would be the report at some point in the future.
I don't believe so, though. I don't believe so off the top of my head, because it's just the why, it's just the debt obligations that the agency had, and to its debt holder, which is a private placement debt that we did back in 2015, 2016. But I, any, I don't...
Yeah, I would say the types of obligations, whether they're monitoring obligations for entities that had used redevelopment funds, and then had to report regularly, or whether they were different payment obligations. The Temple City Agency was so small and discreet in what it was working on at the time, it was dissolved, that we just simply don't have those. In, you know, the Oversight Board did a last and final ROPS. It was, so, and that was before Oversight Boards went to a single county Oversight Board. Really, now, I think, other than the regular payment of bills, there's simply nothing to do. So as the Executive Director said, this will dissolve upon its last payment by virtue of having no more work to do. And at that point, when it is finally and fully dissolved, we can look to see whether any of the new tools that the state is parceling out makes some sense for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matters from agency members? Seeing none. We will adjourn the successor agency meeting and return to a regular meeting. Item 16, additional public comments on items not on the agenda. Mr. Janbaisian?
Good evening, Mayor. Jerry Janbaisian, 9136 Las Tunas Drive, Temple City. I've been known to take a nap, but I'm wondering if I missed it. Did I miss the comments by city attorney? There were...
Sorry, sir. I had said that I didn't have any this evening.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, very good. I'd like to just maybe comment on Mayor Protem Chavez's remarks about the sidewalks. I'm grateful, at six o'clock in the morning, when I look out and I see a city worker blowing off the sidewalks in front of my store, I appreciate that. But even last week, they were spraying for weeds that are coming out of the cracks in the sidewalks. So I appreciated that also. I was able to park in front of one of those planters today, and I agree, that it does not look too good. It is barren, it is empty, there's nothing there. But the other thing that bothers me more than that are the trash receptacles along Las Tunas Drive. They are overflowing almost all the time, and I've personally seen business owners come out and dump their own trash into that receptacle. And I think it's taking up valuable city resources to have that truck go along there at least once a week, and empty those trash receptacles out. And it does look worse than an empty planter, when you have trash pizza boxes and everything else flowing out of it. I can't imagine people walking on Las Tunas and filling up those trash receptacles. I think they're mostly coming from business owners that are just too lazy to go out and put it in their own bin or trash receptacle. The last thing I want to leave you with are two events that are coming up next week. And that is Arbor Day at Live Oak Park, a week from Friday, from three, I think, until five. I could be wrong on that, but the time is approximately that. And a return of a popular program, and that's Temple City's Got Talent. And that's a week from Saturday at, I think Cloverly School, or La Rosa? I'm not sure. I think it's La Rosa.
I thought I saw that. It was not at Live Oak Park.
No.
Yeah, it's either Cloverly or La Rosa.
Is it La Rosa? I think it's, I think it's...
I think it is La Rosa.
I think it is La Rosa. But anyway, everybody come on out for that. Live Oak Park Easter, I agree, was a fantastic event. I'd estimate somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 people were there. And it was good to get back at it again, and I think everybody had a great time. So thank you very much for your time.
Mayor, may I comment real quickly on one of the comments?
Sure, yeah, of course.
I think, you know, it came to my mind, as you mentioned, the fact that, about the business owners, this might be an opportunity to work with our relatively new chamber, and see what we can come together with, as far as maybe a friendly reminder to our businesses of what, you know, they can do and not do, and maybe elicit some of their help in keeping Temple City, especially Las Tunas, you know, clean. And I don't think it's much of an ask. And I think if it came from more of the Chamber of Commerce, who works more with businesses, it may go over a little bit better than us trying to just heavy-handed, saying, look, you need to do this. So that might be something we might want to talk with them about in the future, about, you know, good project to look at.
That's a good point.
And I think you're still the liaison, aren't you?
I am.
So maybe you won't mind bringing that up with them.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
That's a good idea. And I've noticed similar things that Mr. Janbaisian brought up. And I do want to give credit to city staff for looking, albeit it is from a code enforcement issue for some of those items. But to Mayor Protem's standpoint, perhaps the approach might be more well-received of coming from a different party.
And I do see staff, when I go early to work in the morning, I'm driving down Las Tunas, there is staff out there picking trash up. But as you said, sometimes it's just overwhelming. And if it was a matter of the public putting trash in and emptying them, that'd probably work. But if others are putting trash in that it's not really intended for, that's when you get the problems, I think, so...
Because I know there's also complexities with how the different business owners have agreements with the trash receptacles within their respective properties.
I was going to say something about that, Mayor. I think some of that really came from the fact that certain businesses probably order a smaller bin than they really should have. And I was just wondering, perhaps, while the city manager may look into that, or city staff looking into that, perhaps we should relook at work with Athens to find out, you know, what kind of size of bins businesses have, or maybe perhaps, I think I see Mr. Rema have something to say. Because there has to be a certain minimum size they have to have, otherwise they'll end up pushing trash out, like you said.
And we've had that problem in the past in the old Applebee's lot, where there's trash receptacles, but there are people that are using them that aren't supposed to be using them, or paying for them. And that's a problem, so...
Where was this done?
In where Applebee's used to be, you know, they have those trash receptacles in the middle of the parking lot there. Yeah, there's been a problem.
As part of a business license requirement, we do require all the new businesses to bring in a copy of their Athens invoice, to make sure that, at least when they start the business, that they're, that they're starting with a trash service. However, what we could do is, we could ask Athens to go through their records and ensure that for every address, that there is an actual trash service. Our fear is that people could be canceling their trash service in order to save money, and instead, using the city's green bins to dispose of their trash.
Don't they have to renew those every year, though?
They're supposed to, but whether Athens...
I mean, the license.
The license, yes.
Maybe we require them to present proof, when they renew, that they have trash service.
Usually, for the business license, well, it might be, it might be who of us to push Athens to do, to do a check of all their addresses, to make sure that they have associated trash accounts with them.
Well, because Athens is losing money also.
Exactly.
So they would think they would want to do that.
Yes, sir.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Thank you. Any other public comments? All right. Seeing none, we will close public comments, and the meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.